Then it's after three o'clock, I'm calling this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. It was a, I thought I had some communication with Don where he was going to be attending as a member of the public, since he can't, even though he has been appointed to the board, to the committee, policy committee, and is of course the previous chair of the committee. He's not able to actually join the committee until the month of February. So I had communicated with him about attending as a member of the community, and he'd be able to participate through public comment. But maybe our communication got mixed up, I don't know. And, well, anyway, I should get back to my chairman's report before we move forward. We do have a quorum. Election of officers, which would just be basically the vice chair and the, and the board secretary. So, does anyone, is anyone other than Gordon wish to be the vice chair? And I should ask, Gordon, do you wish to continue as vice chair?
Well, the question would be, since Jim and Don aren't here, how they would want to vote on that.
Well, then maybe I should explain. Jim Townsend contacted me last week, and I believe I mentioned this in the email that I sent you all, that Jim, because of other obligations, he will not be able to attend our January, February, or March meetings.
Correct. Well, that was my point. Did you have a comment of wanting to be vice chair or whatever? My, I don't have the input for everyone to be here. And Don, he would be another choice to be vice chair. Right. That's what I'm suggesting, so we only have three of the two, we're missing two. Yeah, but that's fine. I could still hang in there as vice chair if that's what Ted and Claudia want to do. But that's, I don't know if that's fair to Don and Jim. Well, President at one time, or the CCSD, he might want to be vice chair.
Well, I thought he wanted to be recording secretary.
Yeah, that's what the newest member is, right? The newest member gets to be the recorder.
Well, I thought he said he was willing to do that.
I haven't heard that, so that was my comment, so I'm open to.
Well, that's why I was hoping that he would be here as an attendee from the community.
Sure, that's fine.
His feedback on this, but.
Do we, do we need to select these officers today, full stop?
Well, I think, you know, I'm feeling awkward behind it all. So I think what we'll do is, and I think it's, we can, I think we can legally do this. Gordon will just assume the role of vice chair until Don joins us in February. And I'll go ahead.
As chair today. I'm still vice chair until February.
Right, that's right. And I, I took the minutes of this meeting because we needed the opportunity to be secretary. So when that, do the minutes. Unless somebody else was volunteering.
Okay, so Don volunteered to be recording secretary?
He didn't state that to me. I think Gordon just volunteered.
Well, that's just volunteer. If you want to be vice chair, that's fine too. Nobody else wanted it. I don't do very well in the minutes.
So I think what we'll do then is we will, we will move forward with the election officers that are February.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. I mean, I think it's, I think it's fair, you know, considering the changes that we, that we have going on right now to postpone it. If it makes a big difference, we could move the meeting up. I can't go on the second, but, you know, if we needed to move the meeting up for some reason or other, that would be okay. Harry, you're fading.
Yep, it is. Something happened.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so our next meeting will be on February 23rd.
Okay.
Okay. So moving on to ad hoc subcommittee reports, I don't believe we have an active subcommittee at the time. So we'll move on from that. With regard to the chairperson's report, I'm sure that all of you are aware of this. This coming Monday and Tuesday, the district or the board is having their biannual or semi-annual strategic planning gathering. And so Monday, we're going to be asking for input from the community. And then on Tuesday, the board will be moving to do the strategic planning for the next six months. So the reason I bring this up is because the Monday.
Yeah, everybody's got feedback, because that seemed to be the case.
There's a, there's a, there's a little bit of rattle, but it's not terrible, terrible.
No, it's echo.
Oh, I'm not getting that. Do you have another machine on there, Gordon?
Yeah, I do.
So you have two machines running?
Yes.
Maybe you can mute the other one.
Yeah, that's probably what's causing a problem. Feedback loop.
I seem to recall we had the same thing last time. Well, it's gone now.
I turned mine down.
Good. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I forgot having two on. The speaker.
Oh, there goes again on your end.
Well, I got my speaker off.
Okay, we'll just, we'll just move forward. All I know is, I just turned my phone off. It wasn't on anyway, but I just turned it totally off.
Yeah. You had more than one instance of the program running.
So let's go ahead and persevere. As I was saying, next Monday and Tuesday, the board is going to be doing their strategic planning for the next six months and hopefully beyond. What we're encouraged with on Monday is for the public to attend and give us as much feedback as possible.
What time is that meeting?
I was just going to tell you, it's from one to four, and it's live at the Vets Hall. You can also attend by Zoom, but it's also live at the Vets Hall. The meeting on Tuesday is going to be from eight thirty to two thirty, and it's via Zoom.
I can't attend Tuesday. Monday morning, my group is, we're doing our cleanup on Highway forty-six.
Okay. The Monday gathering is from one to four. Live at the Vets Hall, but I believe you can also attend by Zoom. Okay. All right, let's move on to public comment. And obviously, this is anything within the purview of the policy committee, but not on today's agenda. And we have two members of the community that are presently attending, and those are Crosby and Laura Schwartz. So Crosby and Laura, do you have anything that you wish to comment on at this time? Well, I don't see a hand going up, so I'm going to assume that is not the case. So let me read these two written moments that Haley was talking about earlier. Just a moment. That's not it. It's not it. All right, just a moment. Okay, this is from Dennis. And he happens to be the owner of property here on Bradford Road. So here we go. And let me preface this by saying that those of you that have attended the regular board meetings, Mr. Dutek is usually often contributing through public comment, calling in via Zoom. So here we are. Directors and staff, let me begin, so obviously, this is also being sent to the Board of Directors. Directors and staff, let me begin by emphasizing that my wife and I are contributing and involve members of the Cambria community. It just happens that we are homeless, homeless property, quote unquote, owners, living in Eugene, Oregon, and waiting to build our home on the Bradford Road property we have owned for over twenty years. As most of you know, you have been a frequent, supportive, and collaborative participant in CCSD board meetings and workshops for the 2021 and 2022 strategic planning efforts. I appreciate the magnitude and sensitive nature of the ongoing WRF coastal development permit application process, that it requires compliance with CEQA, consistency with local coastal program policies, and is currently on an information hold pending CCSD's response, and is subject to Coastal Commission approval slash appeal. As Acting General Manager D'Enzo and the board members from last year are aware, the engineering firm of GEI completed a detailed review and analysis of the 2020 urban water management plan in February 2022, and concluded and demonstrated that the moratorium on water connections imposed by the CCSD in 2001 is no longer appropriate. The report delivered to the general manager on March eighth, 2022, utilized the CCSD 2020 urban water management plan data to evaluate Cambria's water supply and demand situation. It concludes that immediately beginning the issuance of intent-to-serv letters to permit under up to one hundred and eighty-four additional water meter connections or more can be accomplished without compromising system reliability for existing use during multiple-year droughts and without relying on any water from the WRF. Tragically, this information was not considered in developing the current strategic plan. The board owes it to the community to study, release, and discuss this GEI report along with district staff's analysis of its conclusions and recommendations so that the public can understand and appreciate the extent to which Cambria's water use conditions have changed for the better and be confident that it is safe and appropriate to end the moratorium. The board needs to communicate these findings to the county and Coastal Commission and start the process of securing their support. Past planning was apparently driven by fear that the Coastal Commission would look unfavorably upon the GUBRF permit application process if the CCSD board was staffed so much as, quote, mentioned, unquote, new permits or ending the moratorium in CCSD's strategic plan. The CCSD board has a duty to adopt a strategic plan that fully and openly considers all of the data that supports an end to the moratorium. The plan must include the actions, steps, milestones, and dates to achieve this goal to the benefit of the entire community. We are part of the Cambria community, and we are here to help. Thank you, Dennis Agent Bradford Property, Bradford Road property owner. Now, it says here, written comment to be read at Resource and Infrastructure Committee meeting and Board meeting and Policy Committee meeting. So I don't know how appropriate it was to read at the Policy Committee meeting, so I'm not so sure it has anything to do with policy, but we just read it. So now I'm moving forward to the next written public comment from Lauren Younger, who is a resident of Cambria. Is there a policy directive that eliminates the possibility of having a director who has affiliations with entities, quote, like law firms, unquote, that represent water investors? How much of a background check can be done by the district? So that's, she wants to know if there's a policy directive that eliminates having a director that has affiliations with law firms that represent water investors. In other words, is there something that eliminates a director having a, what would you call, vested interest? So, and it ends with, like I said, how much of a background check can be done by the district? And this was to be read at the Policy Committee meeting. There we are.
Owen would relate to Form seven hundred.
Yeah.
All your conflicts of interest, and it's supposed to be listed.
Right. I'm, let me write that down. Thank you so much, Gordon. And you as well, Claudia. Yes, Ted.
Well, I, I, I think that as far as the Policy Committee is concerned, we're going to be considering today the submission of the ethics policy.
Right.
So I guess the answer to that is that pending the outcome of today's results, we may very well be proposing the ethics policy to the board. And I, I honestly think that the board is probably going to be amenable to moving forward with that. But that's, you know, that's for another, that's for the board to consider, of course, but but we're, we are certainly, you know, moving forward with, you know, ethics policy. I mean, yes, and like as Gordon says, you know, the Form seven hundred, you have to, you have to spell it out. I know I did.
Well, let me say this, and Gordon and Claudia can, can add to this if we want. But I believe today we are considering forwarding of the Code of Ethics policy, but I believe there's also the Conflict of Interest policy, correct? Am I right?
Go ahead, Gordon.
I don't think that's on the same subject, conflict of interest. I don't think we have them.
But I, what I, what I'm saying is, I believe that the concern that Ms. Younger had in her written comment had to do with a conflict of interest more than a Code of Ethics violation. I could be wrong. That's.
Well, then that would be, you know, Form, Form seven hundred, you know, is, is the answer to that question, I think. I mean.
We talked about Conflict of Interest policy, but I don't know what happened to it. Maybe it's. Maybe it's.
It, it, it may, it, it may be, I don't know, it may be moot with Form seven hundred or not. I'm not, I'm not really sure.
Conflict of Interest policy adopted on December twenty, December twelve, twenty nineteen. Needs staff review to ensure that earlier policies are not in effect.
In fact, Conflict of Interest is number ten thirty-five, following Code of Ethics, which is number ten thirty. So we do have, we have adopted a Conflict of Interest policy.
Good.
All right. Thank you, Claudia.
So I think that's, that's, that's kind of the answer to that one.
Yes.
So we have, see, but it's not approved yet. Is that right, Claudia?
Right. No, it says that it was approved. It says, policy adopted December twelve, twenty nineteen. Needs staff review to ensure that earlier policies are not still in effect. So maybe it's still kind of a limbo.
Well, that's what, that the last part is, oh, something's still hanging over that one, but that's fine. Okay. He's somebody adopted it then.
We had one adopted, like you said, a little over three years ago.
Right.
This is still in effect. All right, let's, let's move on.
I got a question. Are you still in public comment?
Yes, we are.
Well, I think we need to talk about another public subject that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
That's just what we're doing, correct?
Yeah, that's what public comment is.
Okay, I've got forty-one oh five, Committee of the Board. There's a question that is going to, if you look on our sheet, it says, in current twenty twenty-two bylaws, section nine and ten. And I think we're going to have supposedly, the bylaws are supposed to be looked at the first month in the year, which is, which is obviously not going to happen. But they're supposed to be, the next meeting would have something about the committees. I mean, the bylaws of the board. Is that correct, Harry?
I believe so, yes.
And so my point is, this sort of comes up, and then somebody, I guess they attach it to the agenda of what the bylaws are. And then you go through them all and see if there's any comments or questions to them. Is that what they did last year, right? You went down each one?
I believe, if I remember correctly, it was a pretty quick summary.
Well, exactly. There was a big hesitation on this bylaw about the committees. And specifically, the Policy Committee. And it got reworded. Is that right, Claudia?
Yes, it did. Now they're trying, we were making it again and making some changes that we haven't agreed to.
Correct. I'm just curious, does, does somebody else have a second device on?
I got mine.
Gordon said he turned his off, but we're still getting a little bit of feedback.
Maybe you have to turn it off, Gordon. Maybe turning it down isn't working.
Well, it, it says it's off, but. It says muted. But if I turn that off, then I lose my other information.
Can you move a little further away from that other computer?
I am away from it, about a hundred and eighty degrees.
Oh.
I have to go in the other room then, I guess.
Maybe just about six feet or something like that.
That's a long reach to see my data, but. Is that right?
This is just something we're going to have to deal with is, it's whether, you know, the, the Policy Committee of all the others has its idiosyncrasies. This is just another one of them.
Well, what I'm trying to bring up here is the CSDA has a policy forty-one oh five that relates to committees of the board. And this is something that is changed without our input last time, other than the board members. Specifically, one of them already had it written up and ready to go, that everybody approved. And that's my question is, we as committee members should rewrite that and submit it to the board for consideration to be rewritten.
Okay, so Gordon, let, let me just say this, that one of the items today on our agenda is further discussion, evaluation, and potential revision of the CCSD policy handbook. So I think what you have brought up right now is something that we can discuss when we get to item three B.
I thought we were going to forward that to next month when we got it re-formatted.
Well, we, we are going to forward it until next month, but I think if we're going to have a discussion, and it, it should be under that today before.
Okay, all right.
We have, you know, four people on the committee instead of the three that we have right now.
Well, if that's legal, I just didn't want to go backwards and then say, well, he should have mentioned that in policy or public.
Not a problem.
Claudia has a note, I guess.
You're, you're a member of the public, and you're not a member of the public, if you get.
Right.
Your committee member as well. So let's move on to.
Question.
I'm sorry, Claudia, yes.
When is the, isn't this, if you're going to discuss the, it could be mine. You have an iPad, but it's never does this, it's never done it before. I thought that the CCSD was going to be talking about changing our policy meetings to every three months, and that.
Well, that's on.
Pardon?
That's on.
Right, so, but wouldn't the, isn't that have to do with the bylaws? Isn't that a bylaw change for our Policy Committee?
Right, it says every, every month right now.
But I mean, if we're, if they're going to be talking about by, a bylaw change at the next meeting, and we don't discuss it today, then we don't have any input into.
Let's wait until we get to that board, that item on the agenda, okay?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay. I.
If we're going to discuss the.
Yeah, because I have some things to say.
So I'll wait to that then.
Okay, so let's move forward with the consent agenda. Has anybody had any comment on the minutes from last month's meeting?
They look great.
I'm sure there must be at least one error because I wrote them, but if they look great, thank you, Ted. The check's in the mail. Okay, cool. Therefore, do we, do we have a motion and a second to approve the, the consent agenda in the minutes of the meeting of last month?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ted. And how about you? Anybody else make a second?
I'll do that.
Thank you. Unless I hear a nay, I'm going to put down unanimous.
Please.
Thank you. All right, let's, let's move on to the regular agenda now. So regular business. Forwarding a code of, approved forwarding the Code of Ethics CSDA policy, ten thirty, to the Board of Directors to either determine a needs assessment to be required, or that Code of Ethics policy, ten thirty, be adopted as district policy. So we've discussed this in the past. So do we have further discussion on this item? Or do we wish to have someone make a motion a second and vote on forwarding this to the board?
I make the motion that we forward this policy to the board. And that we certainly have done a needs assessment. So I would, I would like to see the Policy Committee for both our needs assessment and our suggestion for this ethics policy to the board for their consideration. And editing or changes, whatever they believe is inappropriate or needs to be added in here. But I think that the, what we have here is, it is, is perfectly good for the board to certainly move forward with, you know, with an appropriate ethics policy. So once again, my motion is that the Policy Committee forwards both the needs assessments and the ethics, proposed ethics policy to the board for their consideration.
Question.
Go ahead, Gordon.
I assumed that we already had approval to work on this, otherwise we wouldn't have worked on it by the board. So the question shows, it says, the Board of Directors to either needs assessment.
Right, so I was leaving it open for us to, you know, plus the wording.
Right.
To this particular item.
So I don't think we need a needs assessment. It's the board's direction to accept it or adopt it or not. My, my thought.
I'm sorry, if I may, I, I do recall that, you know, Jim did a terrific. Jim did a terrific job with a needs assessment. And, you know, it was very clear, very concise. He he easily digested and that the ethics policy that we seem to be moving forward years, the one that's in the CSD manual, which I think is a is a great starting point for the board. Yes, the ethics policy just made it under the wire with board approval for us to do the needs assessment. So we have board approval for the needs assessment, which we have done. And now it's time to turn in the needs assessment and this copy of the ethics policy, which looks to be directly out of the CSD hand, CSDA handbook, which again, that's going to be for board consideration as to what you know, whether whether they go with that, which I think would be fine, or create additions or subtractions to it.
So let me, let me go ahead and reword this this regular business item three A. Approve forwarding the Code of Ethics CSDA policy ten thirty to the Board of Directors and that the Code of Ethics Policy ten thirty be adopted as district policy.
Right.
And additionally, that we forward the needs assessment done by Jim along with that.
I I I have a little suggestion for that needs assessment, since they already gave us permission. If we included that as a, as as a, as a reason to approve the ethics policy, that's our backup information. So I don't know how we wanna reword that.
Correct.
That would be inappropriate then to them to approve the needs assessment. We want them just to use the needs assessment is 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 our backup materials, our reason for our suggestion of the So it wouldn't be in the, it would be an attachment to you know, for a a letter with.
Okay.
And I'll second that if you wanna change that.
I'd agree with that.
All right, so Claudia, since you just made an adjustment to that item to be approved by the policy committee, could you go ahead and reword that so I can write it down?
Well, it's Ted's motion, so.
My motion is that the policy committee forward to the board the needs assessment completed by Jim Townsend.
That's by the board, by the committee.
I'm sorry, by committee. You're right. Thank you. Thank you, Gordon. That the policy committee submits to the board the needs assessment that was approved by the policy committee. And the Code of Ethics.
And the policy.
And 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 right, and the policy to the board to consider the adoption of a Code of Ethics to be included in the CSDA or to be included in the next version of the handbook.
That's a little wordy, but that's
It's a little wordy, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah, that's too much.
Considering, considering how controversial this has been at the board level and how much time we've spent on it. I, this is no reflection on you, Ted, cuz I could be a little wordy myself.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I get it.
With a little clarity.
All right, okay, let's let's do it real simple. I make the motion. We submit our needs assessment and a copy of the CSD sample of the ethics policy to the board.
For approval.
For approval. Thank you.
Yep, very
Thanks, Gordon.
I think Claudia wanted to make a comment, but that's that's much closer to the point. Thank you so much. Yes, Claudia.
My comment was that you should, I I think that you should reverse that, so that we are submitting an ethics policy.
Right, you could reverse it.
With with the information that that Jim Townsend
Information. Supporting information.
That's the more supporting information, and that would be the needs assessment. So we're not asking, we're not, we're not asking to approve the needs assessment. We're asking them to approve the policy or to consider
Sure, that's fine. That's fine. I I see where you're going. That's fine. Doesn't make a difference as long as they have both things in their hands. It's
Well, it kinda does to me because it means that we're asking them again to approve something.
Yeah, right. No, I I get I I get it. I was thinking about the order of operations. You're probably right.
Yep, that works.
I don't know who made the motion.
Well, that's okay. I, you know.
It started with Ted.
It started with me, but we
I'll second the motion if you just
I make a motion, we take, we take Claudia's suggestion for the motion.
That's funny.
If it means anything, I will watch this part of the meeting. And write down the motion.
Yeah.
I know I should be doing it a little more officially.
That's okay.
It's the policy committee. I'm sorry about that.
It's okay. It's okay.
I've written down this motion four times, so I I hope good luck.
Well, I'll tell you what, Claudia, why don't you go ahead, read it one more time?
Great.
Well, I have to kind of
Reword it.
I have, I have to write in, I have to say a new motion cuz it it, we didn't really get one that that really was right.
Right, that's what you're saying.
So the the policy committee I actually, we need to say is the policy, the 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 motion should be that the policy commis- committee
Recommends.
Excuse me, recommend, thank you, recommends the CCSD approved ethics policy, ethics policy number ten thirty. You can say from the CSDA handbook. That's it. And then attached to that will be the back, the the, you know, backup information that that Jim did. It would not be part of the request, but it would be part of the attachment to the request. The request is simple. We want you to approve an ethics policy.
So now let's cut that down to something very simple, which is
The policy committee recommends that the Code of Ethics CSDA policy ten thirty be be forwarded to the board and adopted as district policy.
There you go.
With the additional attachment of our needs assessment.
Well.
I don't know if that needs to be included.
Okay, if you don't wanna include it, that's okay too.
Well, no, no, that that statement doesn't need to be included.
Just include it in the submission and we'll be good.
There you go.
So do, since, I don't know if the chair is supposed to make the motion.
Oh, we're all here to, we're all here to clarify, you know.
You actually can.
Does anybody wish to make a second?
I'll be, I'll go back to my second now that we got to clarify.
All right, so I'm going, the assumption, does anybody not favor this? Okay.
Harry, can you read it one more time, please?
I didn't write it down. I just read it off the top of my head.
Oh.
The policy committee recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Code of Ethics Policy CSDA, excuse you, adopt Code of Ethics CSDA Policy ten thirty as district policy.
There you go.
Okay.
One off.
All right. Moving on to regular business item three B. And I was going to move this to next month's agenda because once Don is officially a member of the board, the the committee will be able to have a a much broader discussion, since he's very knowledgeable on this. And so like I say, we'll be able to discuss it with a little more detail, with a little bit more clarity. But Gordon, I know that you brought up something a little earlier with regard to, what was it, forty-one oh five?
Correct.
So go ahead and address that if you would please again.
Forty-one zero five, Committees of the Board is the title. And what they say this relates, this is not a policy approved by the board. They say in current twenty twenty-two bylaws, section nine and ten references their their solution to this policy.
I'm sorry, are we on regular business B or C?
Yes, B.
Okay.
This is forty-one oh five.
It's on page sixteen of our agenda packet.
Oh. It's sixteen.
Down at the bottom, under part seven, Board of Directors, forty-one oh five. So go ahead, Gordon, continue, and then I'll make a comment after you're finished, unless someone else on the committee has a comment.
Well, I'm suggesting we submit a new policy, forty-one oh five, that's originated by the policy committee that would be suitable to describe our activities during our meetings that would supplement or relate to the bylaws as written there in the twenty twenty-two sections nine and ten for the policy committee. And I have, I have written up and I sent each of the committee members my thought, what the bylaw should say.
Right.
But that's subject to discussion now.
Right. Well, I'm gonna make a suggestion, you know, that we hold on on this for two reasons. Number one, until Don is an official member of the committee, and also when the board discusses district bylaws, I'm assuming it's going to be at one of our February meetings that at least Gordon and perhaps other members of the policy committee can speak up in whatever fashion you wish to to address this item, since it definitely refers to us, Committees of the Board of Directors.
That's what my intent was, to get the horse before the cart, so that we're not pushing it up the road again when they're not gonna address again for another year.
I think we, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, that's all. We need to address this with the each at, in the comments of that section, whatever happens. And talk to each one of our Board of Director members to see if this makes sense to them. Or whatever version you wanna make.
Right.
Versus what
That is a good point, Gordon, in that obviously, making a comment at a regular agenda item, at a Board of Directors meeting, would be very helpful. But you can always communicate your feelings individually.
What I was
Through an email or a phone call.
Right, that's, I'm trying to get the wheels turning. As it, I don't think, since it seems to be easy, very easy for one person just to write up a new bylaw and four others agree to it, they pass it without even consulting the the committee. Therefore, we should be able to write our own version and submit that to each board member and say, this is what I think this should say instead of what's written there. And would you please bring that up during that bylaw discussion for the board to discuss and see how many agree with our change?
And it is interesting, there's like nothing really specific here with regard to, well, I guess there is that it's in the bylaws as opposed to a policy.
Right.
If it's in the bylaws, it's kind of a quasi-policy, so to speak. It just doesn't have a that same, how could you say it, clout that if it actually had, well, now perhaps I'm a little bit off base here.
But it has a lot of clout.
Yes, Ted.
Look, in my, one of the questions that I thought was sort of bubbled to the top was the number of meetings.
Yep, that's the next agenda item.
Okay, all right.
So, but it would be in the same thing.
I I, listen, I'm I'm all in favor of what Gordon is saying. I I think as a policy committee, we definitely should chime in on exactly what we think that the bylaw should say about our committee. I mean, the board can either say yay or nay or make adjustments, but but I I totally agree. I I, you know, I, Gordon, it seems to me, so you might have something even started.
I sent you
huh?
I sent a copy to attachment to everybody last week.
Want me to read it?
I can't find it now, my computers.
Oh, I'll read it. The review current existing CSD operational governance policies revise them for consistency with the CSD examples handbook. CCSD bylaws and other existing policies be identified policy areas.
Buddy, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to to
You're talking too fast.
Yeah, not, it's not just that you're talking too fast, but
Right.
A tremendous amount of gar- garble feedback underneath you when you're talking. So maybe if you talk a little slower.
Right.
It might work a little better. Thank you.
So this, this is Gordon's sample draft rewrite. Maybe it could be a bit different for me. I'm on an iPad. Never had one before, but I gotta get further away. One point seven point three, the policy committee show, review current existing CSD operational and governance policies. Revise them for consistency with the CSDA sample handbook, CCSD bylaws, leather existing policies be identify policy areas that are currently addressed in the CCSD policy handbook. Develop needs assessment and timeliness of of need due to lack of policy. The policy committee shall, she's the policy committee chair, will present the needs assessment to the CCSD board for approval. If the board accepts the policy committee's assessment of need, assessment of need and timeliness for policy, the CCSD board will direct the policy committee, an ad hoc committee to write the policy in consultation with the CCSD general manager, appropriate CCSD staff, and other standing committees as appropriate. The written draft policy will be presented to the board for discussion and consideration of our adoption as CCSD policy. And number C, support understanding committee policy reviews. And I say, I must be doing this feedback. I'm gonna leave the meeting, and then can you let me back in? And see if that helps.
What what is your volume set on your computer? Is your volume way up high?
No, not especially high.
You just got better there for a little bit.
I turned it off.
You turned it off?
I don't hear it. I don't hear it now. Do you, you know, you don't hear it now?
I think this is I can hear you fine.
But I can, let me turn this, the sound off of this.
Well, what other, what devices do you have on, Claudia?
I have an iPad, but I have, I always have my iPad at our meetings. I always take notes on it. This never happened before, but apparently it is now. Is that better?
A little bit.
I think it's better.
It's slightly better, yes.
Yeah.
Well, let me just say this. I like very much what you just read. And if, you know, if the three of us are on board with sending that to the board, let's do it.
Well
Since Claudia just read something that you wrote, we need your feedback on this. And thank you, Claudia, for doing
So let's, it's something that I tried to look at what the policy committee does theoretically and what our assignments were to do. Gee, second. Christine got it. That is giving us the flexibility of doing our job to meet the requirements, instead of being told by the the board what the requirement should be, cuz our assignment was to make a CCSD policy book. And it's, they haven't taken it that way. They've taken it to, well, we really don't need a book now. We just wanna do pick and choose. And that's not acceptable, I don't think, for the community of Cambridge. So that's why I reworded it. Who would take the decision-making out on which policy necessarily we would present to them? We would review all the policies and from there, make a decision what's in the bylaws. So we do research there, CCSDA and other community policies to see how they all look together and put that together in a policy and
we can, like I say, appreciate what has been written, but with regard to moving forward any further, making a motion in a second, it seemed like I said, it needs to be strongly condensed down into a sentence or two.
Well, that's the problem with the existing one.
Yeah.
Yeah, keeps you an interpretation by the board that's too loose.
I, I didn't think it was all that wordy.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, what's written by Gordon, as a motion to the board.
I can live with the way it is, it's better than.
This isn't. So may, maybe, I'm sorry, and my apologies if I'm a bit confused, but it seems to me that Claudia just read quite a bit of written material.
Yeah.
Um. And then we're trying to make that six or seven sentence explanation as one motion, is that what we're doing here?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Now, we make it as a forty one oh five policy.
And then we're trying to make that six or seven sentence explanation as one motion, is that what we're doing here?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Now, we make it as a forty one oh five policy.
Okay.
Make it drive with their bylaws, if they want to do it.
Unless I'm mistaken here, we're submitting something as a suggestion for the board to consider, for them to establish what their bylaws will be. Now, the final, the final policy itself may be something that we edit this, may be something we write, it may be something that the, that the, that the board decides that they're going to rewrite or, or, or change. Just because it, just because it has seven sentences, I mean, these, these members on the board are all intelligent people. I mean, they, they can read this thing and decide what's, you know, what, what, what is and what isn't. But I don't think this thing is so horribly wordy, frankly.
That's why I would agree forward, and if I got a second, but that's why I just sort of trying to forward for awareness.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Ted, instead of wordy, let's just say it has some length to it.
Sure.
So does it exist?
The Constitution.
I think that, to clarify, that we're not asking them whether or not we can have a committee of the Board of Directors item, we're asking if they, if they will consider this as a policy. And we're, we're submitting a policy to be considered, so I think it has to, it has to be, it has to be clear as to what that policy is, and I think Gordon did a bang-up job, and if Christine editing on it, you know, you've had a couple of people look at it, and I think it's, I think it's great just the way it is. Yeah.
All right, so I think you just gave us some clarity that Gordon is actually has written, and we are about to submit a policy for the approval by the board, or at least having to do a needs assessment for us to ultimately be adopted by the board, something along those lines.
The thing is, is that there's already, there's already a policy, so we don't need, we don't need a needs assessment, because there is a policy, we want to change the policy.
That's right, just submit it.
All right.
That's what I think.
So, Ted, I believe you made the motion to submit this, right?
Yes, I did, I made the motion, we submit the ethics, or I'm sorry, submit the.
Committees of Board of Directors.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, simple as that.
Policy number four one oh five. You know, that's what.
Right.
For approval by the Board of Directors.
And I second that, or Gordon can second in it.
Yes.
This policy should be in there.
At least you have got approval from two people, so that's good. I don't know if Don would agree, and Jill probably would.
Well.
These people, the board's gonna look at this thing, they're gonna undoubtedly either make some adjustments, they're either gonna say, yeah, that looks good, no, that doesn't look good, they're gonna send, they're, they're, they're gonna munch on it themselves, and they're gonna come up with what they, what they, what they want our bylaws to be. We are suggesting that this is it, and that's all it is.
Correct, because they change ours in, when you send stuff up.
Beautiful, send it off.
My other concern is that if we're doing this, I, I, even though it's on the next item on our agenda, it seems to me, or the frequency of our meetings should be in this policy as well, now, let me, is that need to be, is that a separate policy?
The category, I think.
I mean, is there another policy that has to do with the frequency of ad hoc meetings or standing committee meetings?
May, may, may I, may I say that that may very well be something that the board will say, yeah, you're missing this, and they will want it included in there, and then when we discuss that, I think we'll all have a few things to say about that specific issue. It may very well be that, yes, Claudia, the board will want to include something about the frequency of meetings within their.
Okay, I, I suggest that Ted, in your motion, if you would consider this, just put in the word monthly meeting. I turned off my iPad, so I don't know what the feedback is, I don't, maybe it's my computer or something, so I'm sorry, I'm really sorry. I, I, I'd like to add in the word monthly meetings and to that the policy, and that would include that. And if Ted would be willing to amend his, his motion, then I will second that.
Sure, that, that's fine, I, 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 you know, that, that, sure, I mean, if that, if that, if you think that makes, that makes sense, I, I have no problem with that, I mean, we certainly can, we can cer- certainly include in our, in our submission uh, our perspective, if you will, on the frequency of meetings.
If I could interject for just a moment. On page seventeen under policy number forty three hundred, down near the bottom of the page, where it says, and this is under just a moment. No action. Okay, this forty three hundred is checked under no action, board standing committees. And then it says included in website text of twenty twenty two standing committee bylaws. So it could very easily be that what you're talking about, Claudia, the frequency of meetings could easily be under the standing committee bylaws.
Well, that's actually what we're talking about, is the bylaws. So.
We are.
I understand that.
Because if the current bylaws, we're asking to change the current bylaws.
Okay, so here's, here's what I would like to say, I would like to pull my, pull my my submission first, okay, my suggestion, and I think we need to have discussion on item three, which is the frequency of meetings, and then we need to come back.
Three C.
And, and, right, discuss three C, and then come back and uh, consider uh, Gordon's submission, and whether we should simply add what we believe should be in the frequency of the, the meetings for our committee in, in that bylaws.
Okay, so that ma- that makes sense, Ted, so we'll put this on hold, but yes, Claudia, do you want to say something real quick there?
No, I agree with him.
Okay, so let me just make this observation under, down there at the bottom of sixteen, where it says part seven, Board of Directors, forty one oh five, committees of the Board of Directors, and then you go to forty three hundred on the next, down near the bottom of the next page, and it says board standing committees, so I wonder what is the difference between committees of the Board of Directors or board standing committees? I mean, it's.
Okay, so that, that me, that to me, sounds like a board-selected.
Right.
Ad hoc committees, and then the other one is specifically for the standing, the public standing, so.
Is what we are.
That's what we are, so the first one is just simply not pertinent to us, that's up to the board to decide. You know, you know, when they do their, when you guys do your bylaw reviews, uh, that, that, that's a sub, that's a subject for uh, you know, the board to decide how they want to run their ad hoc committees or any other special committees that you, you you know, you want to propose to, to deal with a specific issue or situation.
So.
Yeah.
Gordon, let me ask you, since what you wrote and was discussed here by the committee had to do with standing committees, am I right?
No, the policy committee.
Okay.
Whatever you want to call them.
Well, then it, then it would be under forty, then it would be under forty three hundred, board standing committees, which is what we are, as opposed to forty one oh five, which is committees of the Board of Directors, this could very easily be ad hoc committees assigned by the board.
I got that backwards, and, I mean, I disagree with you.
Does that make sense, what I just said?
No, it sounds backwards to me.
Yeah, and what is, what is sections nine and ten, it says in current twenty twenty two bylaws, sections nine and ten. We need to look at that and see what's. Could very easily be ad hoc committees assigned by the board.
I got that backwards, and, I mean, I disagree with you.
Does that make sense, what I just said?
No, it sounds backwards to me.
Yeah, and what is, what is sections nine and ten, it says in current twenty twenty two bylaws, sections nine and ten. We need to look at that and see what's. Can I turn my iPad back on, I'll look it up?
Can we, can we? Can we hold on this for a minute and just wrap the third issue?
I was just going to suggest that, thank you, Ted.
Okay.
Well, let's put this on hold for a moment.
Five minutes, it's not gonna take us very long, I don't think.
Think this meeting was gonna take us this long, so let's move on to item three C for a moment, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we requested our meetings be held once a month.
We gotta go to three C, though, I mean.
Yes, we need, we, we are on three C now, and we will return to, to
Yeah.
item two, and then we will make a proposal for our.
We will return to item three B.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to extend that to monthly or as a needs be, or whatever that word is.
Thank you.
Is, we do have special meetings even with the committees.
Yeah, okay, I, I still amend my, my motion then, thank you.
That's all, that's excellent, I agree with that.
Me too.
Need a second.
Hold on, wait a minute. The motion was made by.
Claudia.
By Claudia.
Claudia, and your motion was?
The motion is to.
Maintain monthly meetings for the policy standing committee.
This sounds good, I'm gonna say to the board, to maintain. Well.
Well, that was at least.
To maintain, I just, I just think we should, that it should just say that, well, see, I'm saying that we should say it inside of the other, the other text, so it's just that I'm saying monthly meetings are as needed, so my motion is that we put that text into the policy that Gordon wrote. Not as a separate, not as a separate policy or a separate recommendation in the policy, but you have to second it, and let me know if that's what you want to do or not, too. So my motion is that we could include language in, this thing, I don't know what's coming. Uh, the motion is that we, to include monthly meetings or as needed in the in the, in the policy that Gordon has proposed.
No, we, we don't need to put down as needed.
No, just maintaining monthly policy meetings as a part of the the policy's suggestion for the upcoming bylaws. Or, you know, something along that line.
Okay, that's, what Gordon said was that we should include as needed, because we have ad hoc meetings, and sometimes we change our meeting times, and sometimes we end up with two meetings in one month, and we just have to allow for.
I, I, I'm not, okay, all right, so the motion is, you know, the policy committee approves continuing to meet on a monthly basis or as needed.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Me.
Oh, Ted.
Me. Tin Man says, yes.
All right, so to make this official, since it has to do with the policy committee, Mr. Key, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Harmon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Heinrichs, how do you vote? Vice Chair Heinrichs, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, let's, let's get back to item three B, let's not, we've spent, I think, a considerable amount of time on this already, so let's just try to kind of wrap it up a bit. So I think what, since the other two of you, let's put it this way. Gordon, why don't you go ahead? It seems to be a little quiet, whoops, no, it isn't, I was saying to say, it's a little quieter now, but I still hear a little rumble, subtle rumble underneath there. Gordon, why don't you go ahead and read what it is that you folks previously almost approved?
Please.
Please.
Let me find it here in written format.
Not a problem.
I actually need to leave the meeting, like, pretty, like, about fifteen minutes ago, so just want to move things along, I already read, read it into.
You want to read it again, I'm still looking for mine to.
I can read it again.
Please do. Please do, we, we, we really need to move forward here, so if you can read it again.
Short meeting, and I have another meeting to go to, so.
Well.
Yeah. Okay. He wrote is one point seven point three, the policy committee shall a review current existing CCSD operational governance policies, revise them for consistency with the CSDA sample handbook, CCSD bylaws and other existing policies. B, identify policy areas not currently addressed in the CCSD policy handbook, develop needs assessment and timeliness of, of need due to a lack of policy, that could be written differently, but the policy committee chair will present the needs assessment to the CCSD board for approval. If the board accepts the policy committee's assessment of need and timeliness for a policy, the CCSD board will direct the policy committee to form an ad hoc committee to write the policy in consultation with the CCSD general manager, appropriate CCSF staff and other standing committees as appropriate. The written draft policy will be presented to the board for discussion and consideration for adoption by CCSD. The written draft policy will be presented to the board for discussion and consideration for adoption by CCSD policy. As, as a CCSD policy. And then never seen support other standing committees policy review need. I don't know if that's, that's it. It may be, if you're already saying that we're going to be in consultation with the, the other ad hoc committees, so. But maybe you could clarify that.
I think, I think it's great. And, and two that I would add. The Policy Committee recommends the continuation of monthly meetings to continue to move forward on these very large projects without, just very large projects, period. And, and let the board take this in and.
Well, I think just adding monthly meetings like Claudia suggests in the body would be the same thing.
That's fine. Put it in there. That's fine. That's fine. I think, I think that's a perfectly appropriate place to put it.
Then we can just amend this policy by adding the policy monthly meeting shall.
That's fine. Yeah. Absolutely, absolutely.
What do you want, Gordon?
That's fine.
Put it right, put it right in the beginning. No, no, yeah, not a problem. Let's do it that way. Put it, the Policy Committee, the monthly meetings of the Policy Committee shall consider blah, 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 or, you know.
Okay, then I make a motion that with that amendment to Gordon's suggested bylaw change that we just add in the word monthly meetings and submit that to the, the board for consideration.
Great.
Ted just seconded.
I did. I did. You know, I, I really think we're splitting a lot of hairs here because we'll look at this thing. Come on, you know what? These people, these, these are intelligent people. They're gonna look at this.
I actually have to leave. We've kind of done what we needed to do.
I'll tell you, hold on, hold on. I'll, maybe I'm missing something here, but the three of you seem to understand better than I do what is taking place here. So therefore, we have a motion by Ted, a second by Claudia, so.
No, it's the other way around.
The other way around.
Claudia, how do you vote?
I, I vote B, aye.
And Ted?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Heinrichs?
Aye.
All right. So the motion passes unanimously. So I will do my best when I watch this to review it and come back to you and submit it to the Board of Directors as well.
You know, when you, when you, when you write it up, when you write it up, Harry, send each one of us a copy of it. And if there's something glaringly wrong, you know, we can get back to you on it. It won't, it'll be fine.
You know what I'd like to do? Since we have two very patient attendees and they don't have to comment if they don't want to. But Crosby and Laura, do you have any comment on all, at all, on the discussion that we've had? And the motion that has been made regarding regular business item three B? And if you don't raise your hand, that's totally understandable. I'm just asking here for some additional feedback from two very bright people. Well, they're not raising their hands, so we will just move forward. All right, future agenda items.
First would be the policy.
Future agenda item is today's item three B.
Correct.
Okay.
Further discussion.
Right.
I, I thank you guys. I got, I've got somebody meeting. I got, I get to get out of here. So thank you very much, everyone. Look forward to our next meeting on the.
Do you have, do you have any?
Actually have a meeting on that day that I have to be late to that meeting, but I will see if I can.
The later you are.
Okay, so we're gonna assume she has no suggestions for future, for future genymines, but I'm gonna add one if I may.
Right.
I would like us to discuss the creation of an ad hoc committee to pointedly address the outstanding policy handbook policies and create a method or program of addressing all these open items. And I would like to participate in it. I'd like to work with Don on this, frankly.
Right. That's what we're doing. We're bringing forward next meeting, the policies, now to address.
Oh, that's, is that what you said, Gordon?
No, but we're bringing, we're going to discuss the policies as they are and get clarification and move forward on them.
I think that's pretty much what it says in item three B. You just, you know, potential, like evaluation and potential revision. That's kind of what you just said.
Absolutely. And, and, and honestly, you know, I'm, I'm happy to participate in an ad hoc committee to, you know, to really flesh out, because I look at this thing and I go, man, come on, you've got all these things here. We, we, we need, we need to get this down to bite sized chunks that we can.
What we're trying to do. The forty one oh five, so we'd have control over it.
Right.
That's the problem. We sitting there twiddling our thumbs.
Right, right.
So.
Okay, well, at least at our next meeting, there'll be two more thumbs to twiddle because joining the board officially, the committee.
Good.
Right.
Good, because we need, we need, we, we need to get this thing. We need to get this thing smoothed out because right now, you know, I'm looking at this thing and it just looks like a big mess.
Right.
It's, it's a mess that's been quantified.
Ted, if I could say something, you see, when you're looking at this thing.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the, the abbreviated list here that you've included. Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have been much more in, into the policy handbook. Uh, appendix that you've included. Yeah, for the CS, the CSB, we, we, we've got to, we've got, we've got to, we've got to be able to flesh this thing out because I'm looking at this thing and it's like, oh my God, who's on first?
Okay, all right. Well, between James R. Ness and Abbott and Costello, I think we're about to end this meeting.
Okay.
So everybody who has left and will hopefully see you, hopefully see you on Monday afternoon, Ted and Gordon to make some comments either in person at the Vetsol or on Zoom with regard to the strategic policy that the board will be discussing on Tuesday.
It's not a good plan.
Okay.
Thank you, Harry.
Everybody.
Thank you Laura and Crosby for attending. We really appreciate it.
And what, you know what? The weather's really nice, but they weathered a storm today at this Policy Committee meeting, so.
God, I guess.
All right, sir.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.